Awesome.
Being wide strain.
Steve, that's the other question.
It's one.
That's the one.
Well, that's one.
No, I mean, some.
Are we live now, Allison? We're covering this. You two can.
Thank you.
Um, to make sure we're YouTubeing. Um, that like this can is either the approval of fireworks barge location for within general weekend and not only information we have here, Holly, that is plan four. Friday, September 2nd.
Correct.
Nine P M.
Correct.
Okay, just so we get that on our record.
Um, so, thank you, Holly Anderson. So, um, so, uh, yes, schedule events, which we just gave you guys to give your additional questions. Um, and I believe, um, Alison, do you have the map or put online or not? Or the chart, I'm sorry. I can, do you want me to pull it up? I, I need my heart. Okay, okay. So, um, I'll let you best describe what we need to call the chart.
Yeah, well, as you can see, we need a legend. Uh, Renaissance number six, we're gonna put that at the barricade, which is a channel, the first bar, and then people has come out. Um, that's far away from anything. And so it's still in the same circle distance between the folks who are watching this, their library bar shows, it's a good decision.
Is it soon will get approved this year?
It will, I mean, the distance. The distance is really big. The difference between the distance or what are you talking about?
Many years past, before COVID, we had fireworks, they were in the area between the island and right, I'm gonna say it right.
It's on the opposite side of Curtis Island, it's previously, so between Curtis and Dillingham Point.
Oh, I see, yeah.
He also was with the number ten in base, between Tony and Curtis. Very close to Curtis Island.
Here. The old, the old one was here.
Yeah, so you actually, I get it. So this, this, this is just the web of the channel, which is Red Nine Six.
Yeah. And the benefit to that, um, we had talked about doing it on land on Northeast Point because barges weren't available.
Yeah.
But, um, the pyrotechnic guys offered us a barge, um, for free. And so we're able to put it back in the water and actually this location um, means we will most likely not need to muster volunteers on Saturday morning to check Curtis Island. Because we're gonna be nowhere near.
You're quite a ways.
We're not gonna be really near anything.
Right.
So. What did you normally check for the silencer?
Debris.
Yeah, so now it's all gonna go in the water? Yes. What are kind of debris specifically? The side, the, 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 your people have been complaining about this and I've been like, oh, I, I haven't really known if they were exaggerating or not very directly, oh, yeah, there's lots of debris and.
I didn't see there.
So, okay.
Spent a lot of powder from the explosion. This is probably paper. So, and.
Cardboard.
Yeah.
Whatever kind of chemical.
Fireworks. Yeah.
Yeah, cool. And, uh, what about the location of the ball eagle nest and all that stuff, is there any?
Now, we're far away from that.
Much fun, you confirmed that there's no ball eagle. Uh, wouldn't be far, but if it's over on the closer Sherrill's. It's a closer Sherrill's point or it's closer to Dylan's point.
It's right, it's right between Curtis Island and two ninety's point.
This is the left side of the channel coming in, it's quite a way from there. How long have you just like?
So you're supposed to, no, that's where the, that's, that's, that's where the nests are, that, um, are happening now. No, in the.
Oh, they're in here.
Yeah, no, then the, the nest is over at the.
Yeah.
That are, uh, uh, pit by animal over there at the end's point.
That's northeast passage.
Yeah.
And that nest is Osprey.
Osprey, Osprey. There's that, there, the, the ball eagle's right on his point.
Hey, well, this location seems very good because it actually looks more than it's supposed to look. People can kill.
Yeah.
You know.
And it's, it's further away from really anything.
Yep.
That we would be concerned about.
Yep.
More in, more boats and as well as minor.
Yeah.
Sort of not concerned about Curtis Island at all, it seems it's. Not the location, we're outside of that.
Well, and of course, and of course, with this very accurate pencil you have here, that's almost a better wind direction. Southeast.
Well, that time of year, it's, it's either it's gonna be southwestern or northeast, but. You know, we'll see where that might.
Yes, well, just a history here of, of, of a few members of few years back, like a few years back, we had, um, the, the requirement for fireworks display is state control. State fire marshal is the one who chooses the format. Um, in one situation, one entity did get a state permit and did the fireworks display in the town's Yon Thomas. Of it, why we could have been served because of fireworks and parks and Curtis Island in particular, um, and so to, to try to the, 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 ensure all parties were informed, we just like we created a policy. And the policy basically says that we get to control the location of the barge in the harbor. And that's why this is an action item on, on the agenda.
And we met with the, uh, the, the party as well as the fire tech company.
Yeah.
Um, to confirm.
So to answer your question, what we're getting because of policy and the actual motion.
I mean, most of that we approved the location of the bar for the fireworks to be closed by nine six.
Red nine six.
Red nine six.
Red nine six, a second?
She seconded.
Oh, sorry. Discussion.
So is the these, in the past, it's often been the temporary business group that is officially turning on fireworks like for, for, for the July, and, but these are town of Camden. So this is Camden and the Gama Festival. Right. Which the town of Camden Parks and Recreation Department puts on. And is sponsored by, uh, Camden National Bank, sixteen baby collection, other than fireworks. What's the cost of the fireworks? Five thousand dollars. Is there like an M S D A sheet or something that, I just, I generally I'll be able to answer the question of what is actually going into the water, we bend over backwards all the time trying, trying to prevent debris from going into the water and it just, it feels so odd to just, you know, say, oh, but this one, this is okay, this, I don't think fireworks are any less. Yeah, those, I don't, I'm having trouble rounding my mind around the idea that just okay for that stuff, just to go in the water. But I understand that's a little bit of a separate issue than the placement of the barge, my personal reasons. I will.
Any discussion?
I'm second.
So maybe, okay. Thank you, Holly, David St.
My name is Michael Stalen, having a hand. Uh, last time I think you had fireworks during fires on Curtis Island.
Right.
It would put out, and I don't understand quite where this is located, but there should be some fire protection on.
Okay, absolutely. Absolutely, absolutely, that's what we, that, that was our biggest concern, but the fireworks display occurred without our knowledge. Um, okay, I can sort of attest that the fire, fire chief is aware of it, there's gonna be partners in it, and whatever that act that we would be check the island that we're doing the same thing with here.
Okay, thank you.
Go, sure, I can see it.
It would be helpful just to be able to hear from the fire chief, I think this has come up in the past.
Yes, it does, but I think the, the, right, but, um, any other discussion?
I, I mean, I just wanna check and Alice is on this, I, I think between what we just heard about Curtis Island, which I was not aware of, intentional debris in the harbor, which we should be trying to avoid, I mean, regardless of the, you know, this is a festive occasion, it's really nice, but, um, we don't let people grow debris in the harbor for their own private festivities, and the town shouldn't be doing it necessarily, or town's wasn't the festive occasion. I think in, one thing I would like to ask in Holly addressed that, that he would maybe get in some data on this.
Sure.
But that's, I think in my opinion, is let's approve this one.
Yeah, it's not a complicated issue.
Next time, let's get a little more data on what fireworks and potential impact of fireworks in Camden Harbor.
Well, with the senior.
Alternatives like light shows.
Right, right, with the, with the fire, we, uh, we draw in the, of those here. We just really clarify that and, and to make some discussion about it, however, the alternative is found, you know, ground based and what work conditions is happening there.
The alternatives.
And I do remember in, um, prior years, we asked the, you know, the pyrotechnics company to pick up.
Yeah.
Brown, you know, you know, it was on a barge.
Yeah.
Asking them to make sure that they, you know, sort of make sure they fish anything out of the water that might have fallen in.
Right, right, I think that's another, that's another, I think I, we should be doing the same thing, I totally agree, Curtis Island too, they're out there picking up debris because the barge is in a different location, I'm, I'm just betting this will minimize that.
It's gonna, we're, Curtis Island, but it's gonna wash up on the town's code now, or somewhere else, but it's gonna be the same.
Yeah, again, um.
Can, I think sending volunteers are to do something.
We can, um, we can, kind of, wherever, do a, a search of the shores, you know, on the day after.
Maybe the conservation.
I'll go to.
No, I'm there every day, I might as well.
Yeah, I'm out there.
I don't think it's gonna, yeah.
I mean, this, this is certainly stuff, certainly stuff.
Small, it's small and it's, oh, it, I said it's a smaller scale, you're apparently. Yeah, but I'm just saying that even thinking about it, I mean, it's. Yeah, I just, I mean, they're, it's a very small.
I, I agree. It's, it's.
Doesn't get burned up.
There's been fireworks, how long, how many years have fireworks been started in the mar?
I mean.
You know, it is an issue because it's a lot of the courage you're talking about was you to be watching that from shore all the time. And I've never seen it face down, always ever reported of it being watched from shore.
I mean, but we don't apply that same philosophy.
No, we're not gonna.
I mean.
We've been emotional, seconded, any more discussion, all over the paper. Well, five, five zero, thank you very much. Um, the last item on our agenda is, um, it's, one of the, um, one of the, um, element board we've done in the past, was in this step in time, we've had this thing called Rules of Order on the select board, which is very brief, there, sure, what we're supposed to be doing. And so what, what, what is the bottom of this draft that was something more, a little bit more in, well, glossed in terms of bylaws versus like recommended bylaws, it's much of the same, many of the same things on role responsibility, but it's standard.
Is that in the patent, am I missing something?
No, it's not, it's not in the patent. If, if, that's why I did guess then, rather than put in the patent, we'll partner, I don't think it's going to be there, but to send it out to the board so we can review it weeks in advance of having a one hour bylaws review, so if there are any issues and we have a, on any, uh, I reserve, and we can discuss it in an open workshop. That's what, that's why it's not in the package, it's not for you.
Hmm.
It's fifteen.
I'm so intrigued, that's for what?
Rules, rules, you know, it's like, well, we discussed before, we, 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 we go high, especially the number of responsibilities thing, but not being out of it. It, it didn't cover a lot of the things we should have covered, which has definitely been bad for years. This is a little bit more, more less, it's what you can.
Yeah, we get back on, you know, most, most would, um, you know, like boards have bylaws or most boards, whether it's nonprofit or.
Excellent.
Corporation, they have bylaws, um, it's just, you know, sort of one of those historical anomalies that the town of Camden doesn't, it's you know, it's a, it's a very informal, um, way of operating and I think that, um, you know, just through conversations with community members and board members over the, you know, five year period that I've been here, I think that having something a little more formal than the, the rules of order that, um, it don't, I mean, you know, really, that's just something that was sort of drafted up at G N S years ago to have some way of, um, or, you know, getting the board to read a, sort of a common set of, um, you know, rules for how you operate, but I think, you know, bylaws, it's just a little more formalized and it covers a little bit more ground, so that was the philosophy of transitioning to that.
I had thought about this one, that's been a year.
Yeah.
Okay, but it, it, it just.
Could be like the city of Bangor or.
They do.
We are all less formal than, than.
Yeah, but there's more to discuss and it's, it's all but a one hour even. I think it's substantial. But this document will be published in next week or so. You so to all of us who get time to chew on it.
Yeah.
I just, given that, I should suggest we do it in the latter half of September. Uh, Ashley, we got a meeting on the sixth and the twentieth um. The week of the nineteenth or twenty sixth, the gentleman's convenience, we go off. And what day is best for you all?
What time do you want to do that?
Um, afternoon of say. The twenty sixth. Which happens to be Washington.
Washington.
Yeah.
It's, it's okay. Twenty six.
Stephanie, why is that? Do you look to do?
What?
Um, three. I just screw it. I don't know. It's technically modified.
Um. I. That's just great when I put up my kids, but um. It's, it's okay. It's um, I can be right back. I can drop them and then at two thirty and then you can come. You can come in.
Okay, so that's one. Three P M. Okay, let's, let's play, let's take um, orders. Okay, here.
Yeah.
So that would be nine twenty six at three P M. And we will, I will get out the draft of next week. So you have plenty of time to get it. Onto our manager's report.
So I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, the characters are. Oh, yeah.
Oh, sorry. Skip right by it.
I, I know. That's why, that's why I was confused.
I want to have you guys. Yeah, the basically venue has been important enough to, but why, why we have no specific action right at the moment. Nobody has told officially they're not looking to use caretaker. We also recognize that that may be potentially happening soon. And in that regard, um, we don't seem to have a decline process or the. Going through selection of the next caretaker. So this is really to ask the board and why do we want to establish a process and how do we, how should we most efficiently affect that process for a future review by the select board? First of all, we really should have a process. First one, first term.
Yes. I think it could be a, a really good reality TV program. It could put them through the test of learning a language or prove that you're a real. There's not the piercing. It could be really fun. Um.
One of the, I think there should be a process and having, you know, first time I have a caretaker. Caretaker, which is an act of, I think it hits upon some of the bullets. So. If I were interested in being a caretaker, I, I would want to know what my responsibilities are, my costs are. What the town is covering a little more specifically than that document covers at the moment in my head. So I'm suggesting we develop a caretaker responsibility. Document that anybody comes in and volunteers to become, would like to become a caretaker, understands what their roles are specifically. Um, now we've got to create that document and we have to, you know, we've adapted to it, of course, and utilize it when we, when we have that people. Have a personal interest already in doing caretakers. Just, that was not new to share, which has happened in the past. And we discussed this very briefly in the past, but we never did anything with regards to the process. And maybe the checker again, as I said earlier, we suspect it may be um, 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 the discontinuation of the current, but we don't know that yet. So the question is, and that's, that's what we bring is uh, who and how we just develop that criteria. And um, and so we're back to board and watch this.
Well, I think one of the most important things is um. You know, working with the current caretakers because they've got, you know, over four decades of knowledge as to, you know, how, how things work out there, what's required. Uh, just so much information that we really need to, you know, work with them to make sure that we're covering everything off and. The family has, you know, they're, they're very generous about offering their time to do this. Um. You know, they, they really are working on sort of a timeframe for figuring out, you know, the transition. So I think that that's, you know, that's a good collaborative effort.
Yeah.
Between, you know, county staff and the, the current caretakers.
Would your kind of trying to step to lead on developing that document or would you?
I mean, I think, you know, as a first, the first draft, just to get a lot of that, that sort of raw information on, you know. The cycle of what needs to be done and how often and, you know, the very most basic things. And I think. You know, it needs to come to the select board to figure out, is there anything, you know, different that you want to do moving forward? Uh, or a different way of sort of operating things out there that you would all like to discuss and.
Yeah.
And figure out. So I think, you know, we would just be doing the, the first pass to make sure that we have the, you know, the most important sort of basic information. And then it would come to the board for more of a sort of future looking, or how do you want this to function and operate?
Right. Because basically we have, basically, we have a tenant, we have a storage structure. And that brings a lot of questions, mine and the media. Well, it's kind of, it's not, it, it gets like informal to sort of actually. But anyway, I think that's a great approach and a lot of ideas.
I mean, it might be useful to involve the historic research committee at some point. Um. They have a lot of knowledge and of, especially other public people, um, like Mike. Um, have a lot of knowledge up there. I would also think if we could um. In the Conover family, somebody would be willing to come and, and just give a presentation about. What the, you know, what the job is, what they've been doing. Um, it would just be a broad general interest. To people.
And also, we thank them.
Exactly.
But haven't, they haven't pulled out yet. So it's not. Just officially do, I agree.
Well, but still, it's still nice to thank them.
I think two things could occur. One, you could have this meeting with them to get the feedback into a document that you're putting into the pack and invite them to that meeting and discuss it. So they can give us a bit of that and, and other they may have seen in terms of living out there for that techniques.
What it'd be, I mean, in terms of, it makes sense to even hire somebody from. You know, Dee Dee or David or somebody to. Do like review the job description or review disagreement and make recommendations for the things when.
Oh, yeah.
But it feels like they're, we're gonna have.
Absolutely.
You might need to pay them to do something.
Scalying has been very involved in sort of future planning for the, you know, facilities out there and assessing the buildings. Like, you know, there's a few people that we need to work with.
I agree. But what, all, all I'm saying is the more efficient we can believe in advance with them and where us. And again, the historic use of the, also, we can cut and gel some of that and bring it to us with.
We may need to be prepared to pay something to have a done property, with all of the punch lists of everything that needs to be.
Yeah.
Done. That's in somebody, a lot of that's in somebody's.
Well, yeah, we know how much it costs, but like, it was all there, right? And I'm not cheap to replace, right? And there, and, and it, I wouldn't want to be the caretaker that sends a baseball through the window after a party.
Right. Just all of the things that need to be done to keep things.
Exactly. All right, let's do that. I would, it's gonna take a little bit of time and a lot of work. So maybe late September.
Yeah, I mean, it might, it might take me more time.
Okay, okay.
That's why we were to hire somebody or to pay somebody to draft this all up a little bit, but it would. Maybe Audrey does not have very much personal knowledge at all of, I, about. The responsibilities of a fair side. I can't imagine.
No, no, I'm going to be relying very heavily on the Conovers.
It's really a good heart.
I think if you, instead of jumping to, to figure that out, how about you let me sort of meet with them first and kind of, you know, figure out the lay of the land and what, you know, what we might need to.
Why don't you feed that back to a future report?
It's just been, Audrey be doing a lot of different things and I want to make sure that we don't accidentally assign her tasks that are really.
Well, thanks, same with you, Paul. Okay, well, yeah, we're going to process our work on the now to manage the report.
All right. So um, I attended the M A Y N C strategic planning session. So they invited um. You know, a number of people from different organizations across their service territory to participate. And uh, the goal of that is to help their sort of new leadership, which included their new executive director. Uh, as well as their board to determine how they can, you know, best serve the community, given that they had some changes there, you know, COVID sort of. Um, refraining how they, you know, want to look at how they serve the community. So that was. A really useful exercise. There were um, you know, good representation from a lot of different organizations across the Midwest. So looking forward to um, you know, getting, you know, the results of that and, you know, seeing if there's any um additional. You know, help or information that we can provide. You know, they're really open to getting, you know, feedback and suggestions. So, you know, even though. They, they sort of um, you know, invited certain community members to participate in those particular sessions. They're very open to feedback from anyone else. I also had a meeting with um, Annie's Kings, the regional representative for the meeting from Syria, Christina Breen. And, and we discussed a lot of um, you know, federal funding opportunities and talked about, you know, different. Private and public projects going on for the town of Camden. Um, so it was, it was with the touch base with her because. Uh, you know, many of you know Chris Rector, he was a great resource for the town and was fantastic. It's sort of not only coordinating uh Senator King's. Support for things that, you know, the, the town was doing, but also, you know, they reach out to the entire uh congressional delegation and coordinate everybody uh to support projects on our behalf. So. I think, you know, reestablishing that relationship with that office is, is really positive for us. Um, I received correspondence from John Powers, who is the uh branch. Manager for North East Mobile Health Services. So he's offered to come in um and do order the updates to the select board in person. Which I think um, would be really nice to just have that relationship with the person that is our, you know, he's. You know, for all intents and purposes, like a um department head for our EMS services. So um. You know, I can speak with Bob about uh putting John on the agenda. He said he would only need about ten minutes to give updates and answer questions. Might take a little bit more time for the first time he comes in, but I think having that um on a regular basis would be uh really. You know, beneficial for everybody to find out what's going on with their service and if you have any um feedback or questions, having that touch point with John. I uh spoke to Patrick Adams today who um wanted to know if we are still interested in setting up. A workshop with um D O T to talk about the union and Elm Street intersection and planning for that. So. They were hoping for maybe sometime uh in September.
I was happy to talk.
So maybe I, yeah, I don't know if you want to find a date for that later or. You don't have to.
I mean, I think that that, I mean, I just want to be on record saying that I think that is a priority and that we shouldn't just. Blow it off. Um. It's a longstanding problem that we have and it's connected to many different reports. So.
And just to be very clear, the, the way that D O T sees that sort of working. They want to address the issues with that intersection, particularly in relation to the pedestrian facilities and amenities. And they would tie in the rest of that, you know, that sidewalk that would connect to the new sidewalk that was being built. So that's. That's kind of how they see that functioning in terms of.
Yeah, that wasn't a discussion we had.
No, it wasn't. But this is a discussion that, that we had with Patrick wrapping that into the pedestrian. Um, sort of a headshot project.
I would be, I have more questions about that study than I do answers.
Um, your, your, your thing is, but I mean, I just think there was. The. Patrick was asked to keep this presentation to fifteen minutes. And so that, and that's not, that's something that we found out afterwards, but the, the. Pedestrian safety forums that we had, you know, absolutely identified this as something that, you know, just many members of the public wrapped this up and. Um. I think that it would be helpful to, to work in some kind of site, a sidewalk and be, be there and have them go through. Some of the issues. It's hard for us sitting here to really. Um, wrap heads around it. But this is a, this is something that really deserves some community. Input and I, I think it would be too bad just to.
To have your workshop with them. Again, we're all happy to talk about it because there's more questions than answers about the whole. Priorities and what they're trying to accomplish in this project. So I, I could don't get it. I'll just speak candid. Um, um.
Well, it's, I mean, D O T is a big organization. There are different, different jobs there. And Patrick has moved to federal highways. So he is no longer a main D O T employee. He's a federal.
Oh, we.
So depending on, you know, there's going to be multiple people with multiple goals.
Sure.
Um, you know, I think that from the kind of Camden's perspective, the goal that I'm working on from, you all might change this during your goal workshop. Is, you know, improving pedestrian accessibility and, and um legability and just for that whole area. And we're in really good shape, but for, well, we will, we will be really in really good shape along that corridor, but for that intersection. To where the new side, you know, the improved sidewalk.
The way is the detail of the questions I have and then when I'm answering, like, I have a lot of questions about.
But, but what I'm saying is if we have, if our goal stays really clear.
Yep.
We're in the driver's seat with this.
I, I get that.
So that's, that's, I guess that's my point is that even if we are going to have traffic engineers there who.
Sure.
You know, their goal might be to move traffic as efficiently as possible through one.
Sure.
If that's not our goal, then our goal is, you know, we want a, a sidewalk. There's some people.
I agree.
Abilities to navigate that area.
I'm saying.
That goal at the front of our minds. It's gonna be.
Yeah, I, I, you're right. Same thing. I've got goals. We just, we have to figure where those goals are. That's, that's the core. I totally agree with that. But to his question, I would think a work session probably. You know, we're stacking up. We got one Monday. We got one now on twenty sixth. Um, uh, perhaps very, very late September or October.
Yep, I'm happy to um, sort of.
Because, oh, yeah, Audrey just coordinated a number of people. So it's, you know, it's not like he can grab both of those bodies and talk in about two seconds.
Right, yeah. He was sort of asking for like a, maybe an array of dates or.
We can do that. We can do that. And he also.
That's, that's all I have.
Select boards, Stephanie.
I have nothing.
This is, well, my mouth. Is not covered.
Um, yeah, so we, uh, the conservation commission um, met with those initial five members that we um. Selected and they established a permanent meeting time so that now that can be sent out to all the other people that um were interested. And they can decide how that fits into their schedule or doesn't. Um, talked about um, the treatment thing that's been happening, some of the things that we have. Um, we planned to get so far thirty six of the um fifty three that. You know, that was the goal. Um, the app is working very well. Um, a few more people are going to be trained in the basics of the stormwater mapping app. Um, the other thing that I mentioned last time is the micro solid waste landfill feed increase um. That the uh board of directors voted on at our July meeting. Um, when we reviewed the year end financials, one of the big deficits was in. The landfill. Um, and um, looking, the finance committee, which consists of the um. Uh, the facility manager, the town manager, Rockport and Lincoln Joe. Uh, we did kind of a dive into sort of both the costs are um to the corporation of operating the landfill versus revenue that we're bringing in. Um, and just general the philosophy of micro solid waste last twenty years, ever since we went to the paper bag system. Has been to have um the fees that we bring in um. Offset as much as possible the cost to taxpayers. So trying to bring down the cost to taxpayers. Um, so with the landfill, um, it was really upside down right now. The cost to operate the landfill has gone up significantly. One of the big costs um is leaf shaped. Um, still about fifty thousand gallons of water are pumped daily from underneath that big. Isle, that big mountain of construction debris that you see. Um, and that goes to the Kendal Wish Water Treatment Plant. And of course, we all know that those fees are increasing. Um, so that's uh, that's a big increase. So the, the uh new rate. That we set is going from a hundred and forty dollars a ton to two hundred dollars a ton. And that is going to be effective uh September thirteenth. So just something to be aware of if anybody wants more information about that. But basically, you know, the only other option is to, you know, a significant um. Uh, assessment increase to the towns.
For towns.
So.
Nothing, nothing inflation wise that would benefit ourselves. And she's exacerbated by the physical facility because of the proximity to on. And, and the water that's posted, this technically has been done. That's a lot of water we paid, you know, rates on and, and sending it to our, to our, to our facility and option to harbor.
The good news is though that um, for the last twenty years or so, the estimate for how much life is left in landfill has been five to seven years. It's the running joke that. Every year it's five to seven years is the estimate. Um, now the new estimate is, I think it was seven to thirteen or seven to fifteen years. Um, so whatever that means, there's some, some complex settling um that happens there. But.
Yep. Thank you. Mr. Tom.
No, thank you.
Okay, I'll go with uh minor point is your mind. We have a workshop on Monday, the thirtieth at three. To um discuss parties.
Yeah.
Twenty nine. Oh, and twenty nine, I think it picks right. Uh, just to be sure, I absolutely, I absolutely, right. I correct myself at the fiftieth time tonight. And it's the twenty ninth Monday, target at three P M here.
Yes, and I, my goal is to have you a packet of them.
Thanks, Arthur. With that, I want to change motion.
My second.
Motion made second special. All in favor? Five zero. Thank you, Jess. We can terminate this broadcast.
We already.
We already did.
Uh, they, they started terminating that a little earlier. I'll terminate mine. We need to have.